Good evening. Welcome to the last committee of the whole for this 2023 year that has just simply flown by. So tonight, we have one item on the agenda, and that's a Sound Transit update. We have Julie Tim, who is the CEO of Sound Transit here, to give us a presentation. Thank you, Ms. Tim.
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. Again, I am Julie Tim. I am the CEO for Sound Transit, and thank you so much. It's an honor to be here today to talk to you a little bit about where Sound Transit is going in this particular region over the next year, several years, and honestly, a couple of decades. There's a lot that's going on to celebrate, and I am pleased to be here to talk about that today, so thank you. To start, just a little bit of a background on Sound Transit and where we are today. There is so much to be proud of with Sound Transit. There's so much to be excited about with Sound Transit. We just opened the Hilltop Line just a few months ago, and we're looking forward to accelerating towards advancing the East Link Starter Line in the spring. We're looking at opening up to Linwood in the fall shortly after that in 2025. We're looking to open up to Redmond, opening up East Link fully over I-90, opening up to Federal Way, and we're on target to do that. Every six months, more or less, for the next couple of years, so that we have a fully open system of ST2 projects by the World Cup. It's a very exciting time to be part of the program and a very, honestly, something of a pressure cooker for staff, but they are excited, they're dedicated, they're committed, and they are on target to get this done for the region. Besides the very exciting openings we've had on light rail, there's also been a lot of excitement around the other openings we've had, some of the parking garages in the region that are moving forwards, that people that are in the suburban areas or maybe have less access to Sound Transit can use those to access the system in the region. Those are moving forward, again, very exciting. The system itself has also seen a significant number of improvements over the last year when we're looking at the amount of security, the safety, the cleanliness, the fair ambassadors and fair compliance. The agency has done a significant amount of work this past year to really step up its game in how we're producing, managing, operating transit for the entire region, so that as we do expand these openings, as we do go into other areas, as we go into new modes to stride that we'll talk about in a few minutes, what we're expanding is something that we all embrace, that we all are excited about, and that everyone, every member of our region feels comfortable and safe using as a reliable and effective means of connecting us to each other, to good housing, to good education, to jobs, to healthcare, to food. And that is the promise of ST1, 2, and 3, and I'm very proud that the agency is moving forward on all of those projects and getting them open over the next several years. Now, looking at the future, if I can go to the presentation, ooh, technology does not always serve me well, but your technology is awesome. Thank you. We're going to talk about basically three different areas in this presentation. One is really focusing on that stride BRT and the station naming around that, a brief discussion around the status of the stride BRT project. Talk a little bit about East Link and the 2 line. I mentioned it very briefly just a minute ago. We'll go into a little bit more detail. And then closing up with what does the future look like for our planning, closing up ST3? We still have a decade-plus of work to do on the ST3 program to get those investments studied into construction and open. And what does that look like, especially for this city in particular? And that's the basis of this presentation today. I normally, I'm not sure about this council, if you would like to be able to ask questions as we go along, or if you would prefer to ask during the presentation. I am, of course, amenable to whatever you prefer.
What does the council wish?
We can't take all the questions at the end. Is that okay?
Okay, we'll wait till the end.
Just keep going. I'll power through. Okay, thank you. Oops, so, starting with, sorry, the system expansion itself. So everything I just talked about with the GRTC, GRTC, sorry about that. I wore my GRTC sweatshirt over the weekend. I have it on my mind. The Sound Transit System, ST2, ST3, is shown on the map. The, it's without a laser pointer, it's a little bit hard to point out, but the red box is the area that we're really focusing on this presentation. But what you see on the map is the promise of ST, of Sound Move, ST2, ST3, to connect the region and to connect the region with commuter rail on the sounder to connect it through BRT. So the sounder one is going to be the light blue grayish line that starts the top with an N and goes all the way down to the bottom with an S. That is our commuter rail system. The yellow, where it says S1, S2, and S3, those are our stride lines that we'll talk about a little bit more detail in a few moments. And the colored lines, the pink, green, blue, and purple that are labeled 1, 2, 3, and 4, those are the link lines that are under construction or in operations currently as we move forward. So what this shows you is that not only are we connecting north and south, we're connecting east and west, and we are connecting the entire region through better mobility and better opportunities. What's not on this map that's truly, to me, so exciting is that it's not just about Sound Transit. It's about how this specific system is integrated into the broader transit system with our partners, our operating partners, Community Transit to the north, Pierce Transit to the south, and King County Metro in this area, that when you look in as a whole view of the transit network and how this fits into the bus network with our partners and the ferry system and the roads, we in this area truly have an incredibly desirable transit network that the nation is watching to see how we build it out and how we perform. It is incredibly ambitious, it is incredibly challenging, and incredibly inspirational for the people who are outside this region to watch us grow. So going to the specific projects I think that you're most interested in, that was my Sound Transit ad, stride BRT. So looking at, I already mentioned the three different lines that we have. Some of this might be a recap for you, but again, going through the details of where we're at with the project, we have the S1 line is the area from the middle of the screen, the Bellevue Transit Center that goes south on 405. That's the S1 line. The S2 line would go from that point north up to Linwood City Center, and of course, the east-west connection, that's the S3, that goes on SR522 primarily. All of those projects are in active planning, engineering, and/or construction, property acquisition, the partnerships we have with WashDOT, with our local communities, they are all incredibly active, and they are progressing forward. The project has been rebase lined so that we have it entirely within our financial plan to be able to produce this project and bring it forward, and it has also been rebase lined to the schedule that you see on the screen, where this S1 line, the one that is coming south, is projected to come online in 2028. There is still a significant amount of work necessary to get the inline stations and the construction designed and under contract and built. We are working again in close collaboration with our local partners as well as WashDOT to see wherever there might be opportunities to accelerate that program or to bring it online in a way that, similar to what we did with the East Link Starter Line, leverages our resources and brings it to the community as soon as possible, as soon as it's ready. So wherever there's an opportunity to accelerate, we are leaning into that. And the team is being very creative in our conversations with our partners to see where those opportunities exist and where we can really make a difference. The line itself, okay, a little bit more about what you will see when it actually does open in a few years, and it might seem like that's a long way away, but honestly, 2028 may as well be tomorrow. It'll happen before you know it. When we're looking at those lines, the current ST Express, ST Express is our bus service that we provide as our stride and our link systems open, ST Express is replaced by those high-capacity services. So when we're looking at what the, when we compare it to our ST Expresses, that's where you see that gray line at the top, what we have today that people can get onto a bus and make those connections. Those are relatively good services. As a matter of fact, I've used them frequently. I find that they tend to be well-subscribed to, and that when people use them, they enjoy the one-seat ride in many cases to get to their distance throughout the region. This, of course, would provide a higher performance, and you can see that in the yellow areas that instead of getting from one area to the next in the region, from end of line, beginning of line to end of line, instead of being an hour, you might get there in as easily as 30 minutes or a little above that. We're looking for many opportunities to see where we can improve on that, where there might be challenges to it, so that we are able to be very transparent as we deliver these projects. Now, the area that you're seeing in the south, the Burien to Bellevue portion of it, which I think is the area, of course, that you're probably most interested in, you're looking to see that shift from a 55-minute bus down to more of a 40-minute refined project. I think there's still some opportunities on the table that we're looking at how to improve that. That is end-to-end, so when you would go from Bellevue all the way to Burien, some of those areas, depending on where you're going to, would be a shorter trip if you're making a shorter connection. So we tend to measure it end-to-end. We are going to be on express HOV lanes, so that also does improve the reliability and capacity of it. We are currently going into our purchase of vehicles, where we're looking at having those vehicles be all-electric. What does that look like? How do we charge? How do we support our riders? How do we support our operators as we're going from end-to-end through the region? Speaking of which, those vehicles are looking, are currently going into procurement. As a matter of fact, I believe I signed a contract recently for that, those procurements, for all electric buses. This will be a fully electric fleet. Some of them will be the double-decker buses that you see in the bottom left. Those are the ones that will be on the S1 and S2 corridors going along 405, and the articulated buses that will be on SR52, the east-west route. There will be intermittent charging stations at each of the end of lines, so those will be able to do inductive charging underneath the buses to make sure that they have the ability to maintain that charge through the course of the day. You may have heard that EV vehicles can be challenging to go long distances. We're going to be able to solve that issue by having that inductive charging at end-of-line stations so that we can make sure that these vehicles are in service all day long, and we're looking for frequencies. I might run the next slide. I'm not looking at my notes. We're looking at frequencies in that 10-minute headway period. So to make sure that we stay on that, it is important for us to have those charging stations. We are also looking, of course, at this being similar in function and in form to other high-capacity transit. When you look at BRT, it should be elevated, not just another ST Express bus, but something higher than that. So when you look at the platform, you'll see that it's a little bit more than what you would expect to see, or a lot more than you would expect to see at a bus stop. It has that off-board fare payment. It has the passenger information system. We call it PIMS, Passenger Information Management System, that we're rolling out now, will be at the stations, better accommodations for bike racks on the buses, and hopefully, where we have areas where we're having TOD and more land use, also storage. So those are the kinds of amenities that you'll see at the stations that make it a more reliable and comfortable ride for our passengers. Now, specific stations, you'll see, this is the Northeast 44th. Next slide, we'll talk about the Renton Transit Center to the south. This shows you that it's currently under construction. It is moving forward. I'm going to look at my notes to make sure that I give you the most up-to-date information about the construction of this project. It is being done in partnership with WashDOT. It is an inline station. I think that the team, when they briefed me on it some time ago, were pretty excited about the innovation and collaboration of the roundabouts and the use of getting people as accessibly as possible to this inline station so that they could walk to it, they could roll to it, they could bike to it, and still not have to worry about crossing over the interstate, the state route. It's safe, well-lit, and it's convenient, and it allows for that better accessibility without reducing the travel time that comes when you have to go outside of the infrastructure, when you have to go out of the interstate area or the state routes, go to a transfer center that's on the side of the road. That adds time. The closer you can get to that interstate, the more you can cut off that travel time, and the more reliability you introduce into the system. The further away you go from those intersections, interchanges, the more travel time you introduce. So I think the team was very, very proud of, and I think rightly so, the development and the collaboration around this station and moving that forward. The next is the South Renton Transit Center. The South Renton Transit Center is currently being in the design process. We are at the 60% design, so it is still, has some opportunity for development, design as we move forward with it, has all the amenities that you would expect with a high-functioning BRT station. It will serve all the King County Metro routes in the region, so it will truly be a transit transfer center so that people can get to it in multiple different ways. And it will eventually include a parking structure, so that, one of those things we mentioned before is that there's a great need, when you look at transit, to be able to accommodate people as they're accessing the system regardless of how they need to access it. They should be able to use their wheelchair, their bike, they should be able to walk, and use a car. The point is, is to get people out of their cars into the system, and sometimes if they don't have good transit to get to the system, a car is the best way to get there until we spread a more reliable transit throughout more suburban and rural areas. So this will have all those amenities associated with it as part of this station. Now, the station naming. The board back in 2021, so R2021-14, when you see the R, it's a resolution, 2021 tells you the name at which we moved forward with this. The board did develop a whole policy around how we name stations. Everything you see on here is the criteria that was approved by the board to avoid the redundancy, be very clear, easy for riders to understand where they're going to, where they're coming from, not too long, not so short that they can't, don't know what it is, but not so long that it's hard to put the signage out, be as closely located to geographic centers so that, again, it's anchored in place by where people know that they want to go. The team has gone through a whole process to come up with proposed names for the stride BRT project using these criteria, and I believe it's out for public comment now, or it has been out with public comment recently. I know that the team has been engaged with your staff to talk about the station naming, and there has been really good feedback from your team on some modifications to what I'm about to show you. And this is, these are the names, the proposed names, I should say. They're shortlisted down, they use those same criteria, they have not been finalized or approved. We are still in that process of reviewing them, and as I said, your staff also gave us some really good ideas on how to incorporate them. Those are being, going through the process right now, so I don't want to reveal what is still in process, but I think everyone will be happy that we are being very collaborative and hearing what it is the city specifically would like to see in the names of the stations that serve your public and your residents. I'm going to keep moving through this. East Link, so moving away from stride, going back to light rail. So the areas of light rail that will more actively serve this area, as you saw from the earlier map, really is the East Link. And it goes back to the prior slide, if you remember, East Link goes from Redmond, south through Bellevue, across I-90, and then goes back up north to Linwood. That's the 2 line. East Link is the area of it that goes from just south of Redmond all the way to Linwood. Right now, we are looking at opening up all of that between Linwood to downtown Redmond by 2025. The starter line that you may have heard about in the press, which is just that area that's in the Bellevue side, the north-south section of it, is going to open in 2024. That's the South Bellevue to Redmond Technology Center. Bless you. The Linwood section, which goes across I-90 and to the north, is projected to open in 2025, and the downtown Redmond also, on the other side of the starter line, is projected to open in 2025. It will open up 12 new stations in Seattle. Mercer Island, Bellevue has six stations, and Redmond has four stations, so it will serve a significantly larger number of people than are served now and connect more of the region. And here's the map that I was just struggling to try and talk about verbally, but you can see it now in the pictures. The area that we're opening up on the bottom left-hand side is the starter lines from Redmond Technology down to South Bellevue. The request came from board members and the public to consider, as we were finishing construction over I-90, is there an opportunity to be creative around opening up the portion of it where construction will be complete on the east side? We were only able to consider that because there's what's called an OMF, Operations and Maintenance Facility, on the east side in that Spring District area. Having that Operations and Maintenance Facility there means that we have, we have area where we can store and maintain vehicles that can then serve that without having to worry about going across I-90. Having that OMF East, as we call it, is what is the critical part of allowing us to open this East Link Starter Line as the construction is proceeding on pace in this area and as we continue to work through the construction challenges we saw through COVID over I-90. Now, those construction challenges, you'll see that in the top right-hand slide, are the areas that go across from Judkins Park, actually, it's an international district, to Judkins Park, Mercer Island, South Bellevue. Those are some of the areas, if you remember in the press, we were working on some construction challenges with what we call plints. That's what holds the rail in place. I am really pleased and proud to say that the team has been very proactive in looking at where the quality issues need to be readdressed, making sure that those plints that didn't have the appropriate quality are removed and that they are put back in place so that we can stay on schedule to open before the World Cup in 2026 and have that connectivity across the water. It is critical for Sound Transit to be able to have that connectivity across the water so that we have full access to both Operations and Maintenance Facility and access to all vehicles at both OMFs to be able to serve this region. So with that, this is, I kind of gave a preview or a sneak peek of it when I talked in my opening. We are on schedule, and we are moving forward with a huge sense of urgency and with commitment and dedication to get all of these openings in place prior to summer of 2026, when the World Cup comes to this region. It should be the central piece of commuter transit and activity to get from the region to games and to be able to provide that transit connectivity for all of our folks as they are accessing their jobs, and we know that there will be an influx of people that use transit and the roads, and to be able to give everyone the best access they can get from housing to work to healthcare and food is going to be critical to the success of the transportation network. This plan gets us there. And what we're looking at is, we're looking at these lining up approximately every six months. The reason, the beauty of that is that that's naturally, when they're aligned to complete construction, within a month or two, but what's really more important is that the spring and fall timeframe is when our operational partners, both Community Transit, Pierce Transit, and King County Metro, all do their changes to their bus system so that we can make sure that as we open up an extension, it is opening up with the bus connectivity that is needed to make it successful. And that's how we're lining those up for the next several years. Now, planning for the future, when we look beyond ST3, so we talked about stride, talked about ST3, sorry, ST2 and those openings. ST3 has another, the next set of growth. ST3 includes going from Federal Way down to Tacoma. It includes going from Linwood up to Everett. It includes the area that goes west Seattle and the Ballard section. It also includes the area from Kirkland to Issaquah. All of those are part of the ST3 program, but there's more to ST3 than those. There's also the preparation for future look. What's next? How do we start planning and considering where the system goes from there? And in the wisdom of the region, they did put money into the plan to allow us to do studies for future connectivity and future integration. There are eight of these HCT, High Capacity Transit Planning Studies, as part of the plan. We're looking at those connections. Now, those aren't currently planned to advance now. They're currently planned to advance in several years or more, when the region is ready to start thinking about what the next steps are. Quite honestly and quite candidly, we have our work cut out for us at this moment to get the projects open, get them planned, and begin construction before we really consider what does the next phase look like. But we have the opportunity to look at where we can start, where we can start being more a partner with our local jurisdictions to see, is there an opportunity for early planning? While this might be a long time before the region's ready for the next expansion, having localities prepared with their planning, where the stations might go, how do we look at land use development so that we're not precluded from those connectivities is very important to the board and the staff. That land use planning component and collaboration is something that we do need to start thinking about now, whether we build a future connection in the next 10 years, 50 years, 100 years, doesn't matter. We need to plan today. We need to be forward-thinking and collaborative so that when we're ready to move forward, we have the planning in place to get us there. We don't miss windows of opportunity with federal funding, and we don't lose opportunities for preserving space for that transit-oriented development and connectivity that if you don't have the foresight, you can lose. So I think that is where our team is actively wanting to reconsider our strategy moving forward, to have that partnership with our, all of our municipalities, and where do we look at the right steps to preserve or to protect land use for future TOD. And with that, that ends the formal part of the presentation, and if there are any questions, I would be happy to try to answer them.
Yes, please.
Thank you for an awesome presentation. It's always nice to kind of get the visuals and see the plan. And we got some information emailed us beforehand, so I want to shout out to Martin for, or whoever sent that to us before, forgive me. There was a lot of conversation, I'm just kind of navigating through everything we just heard, and a lot of conversation about stations other than in Renton. I would have liked to hear a little bit more about what was going to be happening, particularly in South King County in the region. Looking at the map, I guess my question to you is, you believe we have an equitable representation when it comes to allocation of stations and funds based off of, you know, what our tax dollars have been giving to Sound Transit of the region. I look at this map, and I think we're really sore for more stations and more access and more resources coming from Sound Transit, and to hear that this is many years out, or it sounds like kind of the bottom of the priority list. I'm wondering why.
So Sound Transit is somewhat constrained by the voter referendum. When I say somewhat, I mean very. What is in the voter-approved packages, that defines what we build, what we plan, what we move forward with. So what we're looking at is what was in the voter-approved plans. There are some opportunities to adjust what's in the plan based on reasonable resources if something is, has been precluded because of something that wasn't foreseeable five or six years ago. We have the consider, we have the ability to reconsider some of the nuances of the plan, but the framework of the plan that was approved by the voters is what we're approved to advance. Some of the other areas you're talking about with possible infill stations, additional alignments, additional strategies to move forward, those are not part of the approved voter plan, so therefore, funding hasn't been set aside for them. If there is a desire for the region to look at that, I think that is something that should be taken up as a broader conversation with all the municipalities throughout the region about what is the right time to have the conversation about moving forward. My belief is that we have a lot to do to regain credibility, and I apologize for that bluntness. I tend to still be a little bit East Coast, but I believe...
I love it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As we open up these projects over the next several years, as we show that we have the commitment and the dedication to make sure that we have the safety on the system, we are making sure it's clean, we're operating reliably, we're getting all of these construction projects done with quality and with safety, and we get them open, there will be a better opportunity to have conversations about the future. But the first goal must be to deliver on the promises that we have on our plate now.
Madam, thank you for your presentation. Great meeting you. I'm very looking forward to work with you. I hope, I really hope that you can help us and have the vision of the leader that this region has needed to provide the world equal access, because as Councilmember Rivera said it, this is a big issue in the city of Renton. You are from the East Coast. I am from Mexico. I am also as honest as I can, and I apologize in advance if I am too brutally honest, but obviously, our constituents and our residents are tired to pay for Sound Transit while we have not received anything but to buses. And when we receive the news of what Sound Transit was, Sound Transit 2, Sound Transit 3, everybody asks the same question, what happened to Renton? And that's what I want to know. What happened to Renton? Why that leadership never took in consideration? Forget about the, I'm not talking about the city leaders. I'm talking about the role of the CEO of the Sound Transit to see, if we're going to have equal access, how are we not represent all this area? Not just the people that have a seat on the tape, but how come our taxpayers are going to pay for the train, light rail in Issaquah? Or I want to be as excited, as you mentioned, excited and to celebrate what is happening in Redmond and Bellevue. I hope that they put a plate that say, "Thank you to the constituents and taxpayers..." I hope that they put a plate that say, thank you to the constituents and taxpayers of Renton for this. But I am incredibly frustrated. I am really looking forward to hear, I know that this was a vote, I know that this was a plan, and the most that we can cave out of that plan was a parking lot, too, if you see the small one in the 44, that they didn't want to put there, and finally I got it there, and then a study, and the BRT. Now we're talking about the BRT who was going to be, that was going to be delivered before any light rail, now we're looking 10 more years for that delivery. Now you understand why in Renton it's impossible to throw Sound Transit, because the promises have been there since Sound Transit 1 and always have failed to the cracks. There is not equality at all in Renton. We have not been treated the same that other cities in any form or way. And I hope that you can see how, how much the need is in this area to do something about it. Because I don't think it's acceptable for now to say, well, the light rail is before any parking lot. No, because without the parking lot, we will not have the BRT. And the BRT was promised to be delivered before the light rail. So I am struggling, I am trying to see the plan, and I am like, yes, I want to be happy because, you know, we're moving forward. But when I see what we are having right now and where the projects at for the process of Renton, how can you assure me that under your leadership, the things that have been promised to Renton are actually going to be delivered on timely manner?
A lot in that. And I do understand, I have, I've been here for 14 months, 15 months, I believe, and I have heard similar comments from people across the region, the frustration that they're paying their car tabs, they're paying their taxes, and yet they don't believe they're getting the service equivalent to the value they're paying into it. That's absolutely a fair feeling from many people that I've spoken with. So it's hard to address that one without saying that that's, that's the framework that we have in this region. It's a very unsatisfactory answer to that question of why wasn't it done differently in the past? I don't have a good answer for that, other than that was the collaboration that was made by the region when they brought forward the package for the vote. Now, moving forward, what assurances do you have that, that we will be able to deliver this project? I understand the board is incredibly committed to getting this done and delivered. I have heard frequently from my board members, every single one of them, how incredibly necessary, required it is for us to meet these timelines, that they are, they are very dedicated and passionate as well about doing whatever they can to work with the municipalities and deliver these on the schedules that I just showed you. So I do know that there is that commitment from the board to make sure that, that moves forward. They also are putting much faith and requirement and demands, right, justifiably, on staff to make sure that we deliver and that we're transparent as we move forward, whenever there's an obstacle, whenever there is a challenge, that not only do we present that transparently, but we also come up with recovery plans to show how we get back on schedule and we can have those conversations very openly. And I have heard that from the board and I've had that from staff as well. So I can't sit here and promise that I can get, I can deliver these things, but I can tell you that the board is highly committed to doing this.
May I ask a clarifying question of what you just said? Can you please bring up Slide 18, please?
I believe that I can. There you go. That was easy. Oh, you don't, I have it, sorry. Do I have to press a button?
There you go. Thank you. So I appreciate that the board is committed to delivering on the current promises that you just delineated for us. I'm looking at the map, if you will, on the far right, and what I'm understanding from this is that the board for Renton is committed to bringing us ST1 for the section between I-90 and Renton along 405, which are the only commitments for Renton and this portion of the region, is a couple of buses. And that we, I'm hearing, I hope, that by the time the World Cup comes here in 2026, we will have buses in the form of BRT, ST1, Stride 1, running up and down 405 with fair regularity. Is that what I'm hearing?
No, ma'am, I apologize. ST1 is not planned to be open until 2028 after the World Cup.
So you know that the Sounders are moving to Renton, correct?
I know that.
The Sounders are coming to Renton, the Sounders are the international host of the FIFO World Cup, and they are in Renton. So can we get some kind of commitment that we can move people in and out of Renton for the World Cup if we're not going to have BRT in time?
I think that's actually a really interesting conversation that we should explore more. There was a meeting just this morning to talk about transportation for the World Cup and what that could look like, where the capacity is, where the buses are, how do we make sure that with the system that we currently do plan to have open, where there's opportunities? So I would be very interested in having staff come back and explore what that might look like and where there might be opportunities to support. Sitting here at the moment, I'm, I'm not quite sure exactly what I can promise, other than, I think that's a really great conversation, I can promise to have the conversation.
So, thank you. When we met with the leadership of the Sounders organization, they were talking up to hundreds of thousands of people moving through this, this city for World Cup. So I'm very, very disappointed in the delay for BRT because that was promised lifetimes ago. But at the very least, I do not want Renton to look bad because we can't get people in and out of here for something that important on an international stage. That would be, that, that would be horrific.
I think that this, again, this is a very timely conversation and would love to come back with my team to really look at, and with, not just my team, but with King County Metro as well as with Pierce Transit and Community Transit, the providers of the bus service in the region, to be able to have the conversation. I'm not sure, a lot of people aren't aware that we don't actually operate the buses that, that we fund, that they're operated by our operating bus partners. And having them in the room to have this conversation will be incredibly important so that we can make sure that the region is staffed up properly with the number of vehicles, mechanics, and with the operators necessary to provide that level of support and what that looks like. I know that there is broad interest in making sure that we do this well and right.
Thank you. Any first comments or questions before we move on to seconds? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm also going to preface this with, my fiance is from New York. I love New Yorkers and I love the bluntness, so we're going to, we're going to stay on task with that and on par. I was born and raised, and a lot of people know this, I was born and raised, I've seen King County grow, I've seen King County, South King County get notoriously left behind, and that's what I'm seeing happening. And again, when we speak of that the voter, this was a plan that was approved by voters, I'm wondering, what was the voter turnout? Right? Who, who, who were these voters? Because South King County is socio-economically at more disenfranchised than Seattle and North King County. However, Seattle and North King County and the East Side, that tend to be socio-economically more, in a better state than South King County, have more lines, have more resources, have more access. We have 45,000 residents that commute out of Renton to work. We are the fourth largest city in King County, Kent is the third. And I have, to be blunt, I think Sound Transit has really failed us. And I think a lot of the Renton residents and the South King County residents agree. I think it's a huge oversight that the fact that we are the home to the Sounders and the Seahawks has been completely forgotten about, especially with the World Cup coming. And so I'm wondering, how set in stone is this? Is this plan up for change at all based off tonight's feedback? Are we going to see any, any alterations more than just, and for lack of a better word, with all due respect, lip service?
Can I ask a clarification question?
Absolutely.
When you ask, is there room to change the plan or modify the plan, what kinds of thoughts do you have around what? Because again, what I mentioned earlier was that there are certain areas of, certain areas in the plan that are locked in, and there are certain areas where they can be modified when there is just cause and reason, such as where a certain station's planned, the development in that area is such a way that it makes it unaffordable, we could shift by a block or two. Those are the kinds of adjustments we are allowed to make. Do you have a specific thought that you wanted us to look at that could adjust? Because my first answer, I think, is going to be unsatisfying.
Well, no, I appreciate that. I think to Councilmember Holleran's point, the BRT line coming before the World Cup would be a smart move on Sound Transit's part, based off of the population, the people who are, the hotels in Renton and South King County are also a little bit less expensive in Seattle and other places. So when people are coming for the World Cup, they're going to want to come here. And I guess my concerns was, I'm hearing like a lot of this stuff is set in stone, and there's this concern around land use, right? But if you're going to wait 10, 20, 30 years to bring something, you can't complain about land use when you made us wait 30 years for us to get a station, right? Because we're also bumping up against gentrification, the fact that people are getting moved out here because we are somewhat a little bit more affordable. I don't know how long that'll last, but those are, I guess those are kind of what I'm alluding to, the BRT lines, us just getting more prioritized because we just haven't been, not in my lifetime.
I do know that the board has had multiple conversations, both publicly and privately, around looking for better accessibility in all of our communities, especially those that have been historically underserved. I know that that's a catchphrase, I don't mean it that way. I mean that sincerely. And the board has had those conversations, and we need to look at that and consider what that looks like for this region. Regarding accelerating the Stride project to be delivered before the World Cup, some of the challenges that we would face in doing that would be that the interchange is under construction now, may or may not be ready at that point. We also have to build what's called our bus base north. That is the area where we'd actually be able to store the vehicles once they're received. Many of the vehicles that we have do not, not many, all of them, do not actually exist. Once we procure them, then they start building them. And it takes a couple of years to put the assembly line together, the parts to get them there. So I don't want to, I don't want to make false promises that we could actually get this delivered before World Cup when it's highly unlikely that there is a, an avenue for us to get there. With that said, the team is looking for every opportunity to accelerate. I'm not optimistic that there's any world in which we could do it before the World Cup.
I appreciate your candor, thank you.
I'm sorry, Kim Convon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you so much for your presentation. I think it's very helpful. And while we were left out or we were not priority in terms of the board package that you mentioned, and there's no point in going backward in time, but I wanted to ask on page 18, in terms of planning study, had, do you have a timeline in terms of when we can, if it began already in terms of studying the potential of having light rail station for Renton, just as a study aspect?
We don't have a timeline for that, but I think there's a real opportunity here for that discussion, that while the, the current plan is to do that much later in the, the plan, that, I'm sorry, I'm looking at you, but I'm not sure if it looks like I'm looking at you, I apologize. The, I think there's a, and I've talked with my team about this, about what kind of opportunity could we have to look at, early studies, conceptual studies, where there might be other funding sources available, especially those that look at investments in communities that have not been able to receive the full service of, of public infrastructure in the past, that maybe there's an opportunity there. There are ways that we can have a conversation about what that looks like so that we can be ready. What we don't want to do is do too much engineering and design that sits on a shelf and becomes stale. But I think that there is an opportunity for us to have a discussion about where we can be prepared to, to look at opportunities, look at where those, the development might be able to be preserved and be prepared to accelerate once we get through the openings of these projects. Again, I believe very deeply that we need to be able to have and show the region the success of these openings. And that's the first priority. But concurrently, we can have conversations about what the future looks like, the growth of the region, and how do we prepare for that? And I think there's a real opportunity to have that here.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. I really appreciate your transparency. I do appreciate the fact that when we ask questions, you don't roll your eyes and try to tell us, well, yeah, we will, or no, no. You're telling us, no, this cannot be done because of this and this. I rather that, that the last 10 times that I ask, I ask, when the study is going to be done, they look at me like I'm from Mars. At least I want to know, the study is not going to be on tomorrow or when it's going to be done. And it's very important, the timeline, because really, we, that way we can figure it out, even if it's from now to 10 years, we can start lobbying, no, that has to be sooner with the board at least. But I really like the fact that you're presenting the future plans, because as you said it, we need to start looking at the future. We don't know when that future is going to be, and you just said it, it could be 10, 20, 30 years from now. But the land use is a big problem. So I'm going to throw something out there that I kind of talked to Martin on Friday, and he looked at me and he said, no, wait. And I say, well, you're the engineer, I'm not. So this is where it comes. King County has just purchased the Red Lion that is across the street from where the transit center is going to be. That, that property has to be purchased by King County because it's turned down. So it was cheaper to purchase it to actually rebuild it. Have the Sound Transit, I don't think, has had any consideration on actually buy that property? And I'm going to explain to you why. Because eventually, light rail is going to come. And if you see the plans of where the Sound Transit is, there is not a space for a, for a light rail there. And one of the biggest problems that we have with the BRT is that the BRT has to go inside of the city. So where the Red Lion is, is actually right in the 405. So instead of putting the BRT on the Sound, on the, and again, I'm not an engineer, where the transit center is, if the BRT can go there, then you can plan as a light rail station for the parking lot. I don't know, I'm not an engineer. But if the opportunity is there across the street, and we know that that area is going to be housing-oriented transportation all the way to here, to City Hall, I think would be a misuse of opportunity not to start looking if, oh, maybe that property that King County owns, before they sell it to someone else, can be something that will be considered for the future of Sound Transit.
I think that's an excellent point that we should be discussing. I think I can commit to advancing that conversation, having staff come in and really give that a good review, to see what opportunities exist, either for, for near-term or long-term uses. And I really appreciate you bringing that forward, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. McErving is first.
Thank you. I also want to chime in a little bit with some of my colleagues. I think what you've heard today is a shared frustration, obviously, on the delay, and I know that's being, as you expressed, felt across the region. I just want to make sure we're stacking up projects, I think comparatively, because it is tough to see, I think, in some cases, a lot of these projects that I believe were ST2 projects being celebrated as coming online, when really, we probably would be better, better benchmarking ourselves against some of the ST3 projects and to see if we see similar delays in some of those. I will say, knowing that Bus Rapid Transit was a promised early deliverable, that, you know, that was something I think a lot of us looked forward to, myself included, when the package was proposed, it's like, okay, yeah, you know, Issaquah gets light rail, but it's like so far in the future, whereas I think we were so excited by that 2024 date being seeming so realistic and tangible. And I understand a lot happened between that ballot measure passing and where we are today. I'm trying to wrap my head around, I guess, the costs. So you listed some of them as far as what was driving these delays. So the bus base for sure, it sounds like was one of them. It was this, so I guess the question I have is, was it a driver of escalating costs mostly or a loss of revenue to fund these? Or what was, was the, the, the area that made us have to scale back? Because a lot of these things would have been in- was it a driver of escalating costs mostly or a loss of revenue to fund these? Or what was the area that made us have to scale back? Because a lot of these things would have been, in theory, done, right? Now, obviously, we had some delays along the way. I know WashDOT would be certainly out of control. But what were some of the things that delayed some of the Sound Transit side of things to not have these things come online soon? And I'm only saying this because the dates slipped a little bit, right? Originally to 26, and we hear this for to 27, and now we're hearing 28. And so I just, I want to feel really good about 28.
I hear you, as do I. And so I think that this is one thing where, having been here for 14, 15 months, I also frequently kind of conflate ST2 and ST3 frequently. And it doesn't help that some of our ST projects that we're delivering now actually do have some ST3 components to them. So to clarify about the early delivery, the projects that we're looking to celebrate openings now primarily are ST2. With Stride being ST3 as an early delivery in the 2027, 2028, 2029 timeframe, I think Bus Base North is a little bit earlier so that we can make sure that the vehicles arrive and have a place to sit before you open. West Seattle Ballard, West Seattle particularly is looking at 2032. When we look at Tacoma, we're looking at 2035. When we're looking at Everett, we're looking at 2037 to 2039. When we're looking at Ballard, we're looking at 2040. When we're looking at Issaquah, I believe, I don't remember the number for that one, but when you say way out there, it's post-2040. So that still is way out there. When you look at the frame of ST3 projects, while it is, again, an unsatisfactory response, I get that wholly, BRT is still in advance of all those other ST3 extensions. And it's sometimes, again, easy to get them mixed up. I do it frequently, unfortunately. When I'm thinking about all the projects that we're opening, those are primarily ST2 projects. Now, regarding the question, I completely forgot the question when I was trying to make that point.
Well, you added on quite a few questions.
The one I was getting to the heart of, I think, there had to do with what caused, was the major slippage in that timeline? Because I think that's the fear, that it would go further. So you mentioned Bus Base North. So what specifically led to those delays? Was it just a lack of revenue? Because I think what the concern, we want to make sure we're hearing is that we're not seeing, we were seeing equal delays, I think, across the board in ST3. So that those projects are slipping at equal rate, not that Renton's getting held behind while those other things, while we're prioritizing other areas. And so I guess I was looking for maybe some more specifics in terms of, outside of some of the WashDOT projects. Specifically, it sounds like that Bus Base North is a pretty big component of this.
It is one component of it. But I would say that across the board, what we're seeing across the country, not just here, and we felt it very strongly during COVID, and we saw it very strongly over the last several years, is the headwinds for construction and supply chain that have only gotten worse. Before I arrived several years ago, a couple of years ago, the Board also reflected on these as COVID hit, that there was a significant challenge with the supply chain, with the financial affordability, when we're seeing these high escalation costs and these high factors of getting supplies in. And they, in their review of the program, did the realignment that pushed the entire program out. It also resulted in some of the areas, such as parking garages, getting deferred as well. So there's a lot that went into that decision, a lot more details to it than I can actually reflect on. I wasn't here for that. But I do know that the Board did consider the entire ST3 program to make sure that it was aligned with the financial ability to be able to bond and to receive our CIG, CIG, our capital investment grants from the federal government, our TFIIA loans, which I, don't ask me what TFIIA stands for, I know it, but Transportation Improvement Financing, I got it wrong. I already know I got it wrong. It's the loans we got. And so all of those, and our financial plan and how we can maintain that affordability, maintain our bond ratings that we can go out to the bond market, all of that was taken into consideration to phase the projects in such a way to maintain the affordability of everything. And that meant to maintain that affordability, it did have to extend out the delivery of these. I know that the Board struggled with that. I know that there was a lot of heartburn with them. None of them wanted to have to take that on, and yet it was the financially responsible thing to do. And that's challenging to sit here and then have to deliver that news. But I believe it was the right call that the Board made and that we are continuing to move forward and look for opportunities to accelerate these projects, knowing that the construction and financial headwinds have only gotten worse. And you'll see those when you look at the WashDOT projects and the Port projects, and you'll read in the papers where many of these projects are coming in significantly higher than was planned. We are not immune to that. So exactly why they got pushed out again during COVID, when they looked at the issues associated with just overall the economy, they looked at the resources that were coming in and the financial sustainability of delivering in that timeframe, it looked like it was not going to be feasible to go to the bond market and get the funding necessary to build all that in the promised timeframe. And that's where realignment came from.
Mr. Prince.
Thank you so much. And per usual, Councilmember McEraven took part of my question. I will, you did, but I will struggle on. Thank you so much, Julie, for being here tonight and answering all my colleagues' questions. When you were talking about the future of light rail, I think one of the things that I wanted to make sure that you mentioned to my colleagues is that there have been some initial conversations with Renton staff about the future of light rail. Do you want to share something about that?
I certainly, I know that when I first got here, I believe the meeting that I had with you all, with you all, when I say you all, I mean staff and the mayor, was, I want to say, in late 2022, when we first started talking about, what does that look like for us to start thinking about doing planning for a potential future light rail connection here? And it is a conversation that has been going on staff to staff, I think, for many months, over the course of 2023. It's a challenge for us as an agency to consider accelerating funding for this. And yet, I think it is the right move for us to consider looking for partnerships with the city, with the federal government, with the state, with other agencies on where we can get some funding to really accelerate the conversation. And that's really where we've been focusing more recently, is what is the best time to engage in that planning process without doing it too soon that it becomes stale and a waste of money, but not so late that you get precluded from good TOD investments or preservation for the future? And those conversations are going on. I think there's a lot more work that we need to do to really advance those conversations. I wouldn't say they've been as in-depth as you would like, as this Council would like. And I think there's an opportunity to improve on that.
Thank you.
So I just, I want to, I want to thank you for your patience with us. And I want to give just one example of why you're hearing the depth of our frustration. And it's not our intention to initiate you into our, I mean, this is not how we normally are, but this is a very sore subject for Renton. And I want to give you one example of, you keep saying that some of these projects are coming online from ST2. We have had a direct access ramp at North 8th Street, identified from the Sound Move Initiative of 1996, that was supposed to come online in '29. And we just heard this morning that it's not going to start until '39. That's 43 years after it had been identified. And in last year's legislation, it was funded. So here we are again. So that's a 43-year, two generations of patients. And that's what you're hearing here. So every time a date changes for us, it's another, it's like a death by a thousand little cuts. And I just wanted you to have that perspective.
I appreciate that clarity. And I hate to speak for the Board, but I'm going to try and do my best to channel my 18 bosses that they have heard it, they feel it. They are also challenged with the state that we're in, with the economy, and the region, the state, the country. And I have heard repeatedly from them that they are pressing rightfully for a higher sense of urgency and commitment to deliver. There's not a day that goes by that I don't hear this. And so I would, it would be in poor form for me to not acknowledge that they are fully committed and dedicated to continuing this move forward, that we are looking to hire leadership to support the staff from potentially international consideration or national that will look at different approaches to deliver these projects where we can save money and save time. And we're in recruitment for that right now. And I believe that will bring fresh ideas while we have an incredibly dedicated and incredibly expert staff. No one in the country is doing what we're doing here. There is always ability to bring in fresh perspectives, and the Board has committed to doing that, and we're in the process of doing it now. I am very hopeful that that new leadership that would come in to support the capital program will be able to find public-private partnerships, DBOMs, other kinds of mechanisms that can accelerate these programs and bring us back into alignment where we are working together in a more positive framework. It will take us, again, some time to rebuild that. But I believe that the Board is dedicated to it.
Thank you. We have time for one more.
Okay. Thank you again for an amazing presentation. I think a lot of people would love to know, because I'm curious, logistically, who is Sound Transit accountable to? Because if the people in Renton are upset, they're obviously, they're going to let us know, as they should, communicate with us and let us know what's going on. I'll say, like, that was a great reminder. I was, I was about seven or eight years old when that promise was made, and now I'm 34, okay? I used to take the 148 from my neighborhood to go downtown to Renton. I take in public transportation. It's gotten harder since I was a kid, which I don't know how that's even possible. But who is Sound Transit accountable to? Who can the Renton residents voice their concerns to, to hold accountability to these plans that have left us behind because we're not a priority?
As I mentioned, I have 18 bosses. That's the Sound Transit Board. And we have public meetings. We have the Executive Committee, the Finance and Audit Committee, the Rider Experience and Operations Committee, the System Expansion Committee, and the full Board. And all of those have the opportunities for public comment. The Board does take written comment. But the Board is accountable, and they do listen very, very closely to the comments they receive from the public. Now, I understand from feeds on Twitter and elsewhere that people don't always believe that. But I can assure you, I hate words because I have no way to prove it. But my experience with the Board is that they do listen to the comments in the public, they take them very seriously. And they have, they use them as part of their deliberation. So they are accountable to, and they do answer the public. And if the public has issues, that is where they should go, is to the public comment, to the whole Board.
A public comment to the Board of Sound Transit.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I think we've beaten you up enough.
Not at all.
Welcome to Sound Transit.
Thank you.
Welcome to Renton. I really do appreciate you coming and, you know, entering the arena, as it were. And I know we're all looking forward